Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm going to start the meeting off with a roll call vote to establish that we have a quorum. Joe?
Here.
Christina?
Here.
John?
Here.
And I'm here as well. We do have a quorum. We do not have our clerk here. John, are you the deputy?
I'm the deputy clerk, yeah.
Has this meeting been properly noticed?
It has.
Thank you very much. Christina, would you be able to do the?
Yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Each student has access to the resources and educational record they need at the right moment in their education, regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, ability, language, family background, or family income.
Thank you. Would you also do the results policy?
Each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse local society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life.
Thank you. So everyone had a chance to take a look at the agenda? Are there any questions? If no, is there a motion to adopt?
Sub move.
Motion from Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John on favor of adopting the tonight's agenda. Someone apply with that?
Aye.
All right, the meeting has agenda has been adopted. Let's move straight into the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Firstly, before we get going, I want to thank the Board of Education and the team, especially our deputy superintendent, Mr. Chad Wiese, for the execution of OE2, a matter that was not able to attend last board meeting on, like forever though, but two weeks ago. So again, I want to thank the Board for continuing to do great work, and our absence into our deputy superintendent for very effectively navigating the day. So as we move into the superintendent's report, I want to invite Mr. Chad Wiese to the table, and he's going to be joined by Rochelle to do an update on our hiring. As you look at the agenda, you may notice it's a little more complex than we generally have, and that's why we're kind of walking it before we go in. So you see in the superintendent's report, we have three major items: human resources hybrid update, the work for the finance update, and then OE9. We're going to pause and stop the superintendent's presentation at that time and move into board action. And at that time, usually we don't present again, but you'll see under item C under board action, R 2.13, which is science capacity building discussion. The reason we will have a, we are going to ask for board action following that, which is why that's where it's placed on the agenda, but there is a presentation from the academic services team that will give you context before we ask the board to take action there. So that kind of explains why you have a presentation under board action, where generally they are under superintendent's report.
Okay.
So thank you for understanding there. Now I'll turn it over to Chad and Rochelle.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to turn it over very briefly here to Rochelle. We have just a start of the year very re-updating of hiring, and then we wanted to have a discussion, certainly hoping for a little back and forth and reaffirmation that we're moving in the right direction regarding compensation for hourly staff. And I think that those two things are certainly interconnected. So I'm going to have Rochelle, I can take over, start of the year in terms of how things are going for hiring, and then just an update to the board in terms of what we are recommending by the time we finalize our budget on October 24th. And I'll take it back from Rochelle when we can talk to make steps in terms of what this will look like over the next couple of weeks as we move towards finalizing the budget. So Rochelle, it is all of you. It's good to have you.
Thank you. It's good to be up here, and I want to really highlight all of the hard work that our leaders in the district has had this year with hiring. OE4 is an important part that we live and breathe every day. And as we set the school year out for success, I think it's really important to highlight who we have brought in so far this year. So as you will see on the screen, we have hired 127 employees between July 1st and September 18th. That is down from previous years. So I find that really wonderful success on our leadership here at the district and the board's direction that we're bringing in the right people and staying and feeling like you're a part of the family.
But per scale, that's still 14, 15% of our entire staff.
That's correct.
I would not minimize the work that each other did this summer to bring in 127 people.
That's fair. That's fair. 65 of those folks are teachers, and that's really amazing work. We started the school year fully staffed for classroom positions, which is unheard of in the economy and the market that way. We've hired 15 special assistance. On top of that, 20 additional hourly support assistants. And I think one of the biggest and most important parts that helped us stay open last year that will continue to help us stay open this year are substitutes. We have hired 21 substitutes so far for this year with 11 more than we have. We onboard them every other day. It's a, it is constant bringing the right people for us. And then there's a couple other folks. The other part of OE4 that we're really committed to is ensuring that the diversity of our staff matches or exceeds the diversity of our students. And this year, we have done a really good job with that. 20% of our new hires, I'm sorry, 16% of our new hires, 20 of our new hires identify as Hispanic. That is in alignment with our student population. 19 staff of color have been hired. That's 15% of our staff that we've hired are staff of color. That is also closely in alignment. And we've hired 31 males this year, which is one of our biggest male groups that we hired. So we have some high expectations for our leaders. We have equity questions, diversity questions. We are getting into it. And I think that hard work is reflected in our hiring update that we've got at this point. The other piece, if you're okay with it, I would like to lean into more on our hourly salaries. And this is really important. They tie together. And I want you to know in the public to know what our process is. Every hourly person that we hire is placed on set to our salary schedule. In comparison to our teachers, where we're looking at years of experience, our hourly staff do not have that opportunity. Everyone starts at the same spot, and they move lack and spec together as they progress in their program through the district. Dane County, though, is a little different. We are competing against really qualified folks and good employers in Dane County. And employers have more flexibility to move folks around, and they're also able to attract and recruit people differently. So we find it really important, if we're here to hire the best staff for our kiddos and the most important staff for our kiddos, staff are doing really hard, hard work, that we need to make sure that we are compensating them for the work that they're doing. Because again, we've got external market forces that we are competing against on a daily basis. Even though we've done really good job this year, it is always kind of in our, in our line of sight that we are competing against all sorts of other people. And we've done a really good job of that in comparison to other school districts. But again, we live and we work in a really unique community where we are competing against other factors that are outside of our control. And what's so important is we're.
Rochelle, the only guy I can add to that slide, and I think I've mentioned this to the board before. Many of the hourly employees kind of report from me in terms of the operations of the school district. And I often, you know, refer to those folks as really the engine that drives this place. And that on a daily basis, no food service, no support staff, no EAs, no secretaries, no bus drivers, we couldn't run our school district. And certainly, we continue to highlight the super important work that goes on in our classrooms. But without all that support staff in place, this school district doesn't function. So credit to Rochelle's team for continuing to do the hiring they're doing. But I can tell you, between Dr. Hallberg, Special Ed side, and then Food Service and Operations with Chad Brummer, it is a non-stop churn in terms of making sure that we're fully staffed. As soon as you drive John in my office today, you know, excited, he feels like he finally just got back to being fully staffed on the custodial side, and that could change tomorrow. Those are folks that turn over a little more often than some of our classroom teachers. They aren't tied to a classic school calendar, so they're being placed in and out of our organization, and they're absolutely critical to making sure that this is being called. So I just wanted to certainly end. All right, certainly related is this Rochelle.
Yeah, like Chad said, they do make the district proud, and it's important that we celebrate them and help them make over the whole age as well. And it's really interesting. You can go back and look at studies on some of what happened post Act 10. And this is in our, out of our control, and what Act 10 has done specifically within school districts and the compensation case that we're able to utilize as a recruiting and attraction and retaining point. And there was a really interesting study done through a university that actually highlights that Wisconsin Public Schools salaries have decreased in value in comparison to every other like western state and the nation post Act 10. There's real data that's in that stat. And there's a lot that goes into that, but it's, it is truthful, and we are living and breathing it 12 years later. What we can also see and recognize is what our staff actually make. And I think it's really important to call out how much a food service worker pays. A brand-new food service worker makes right around $15,500 through the school district. An SEA who's working with our hardest and most difficult students and is kicking by every day starts at $26,000. And our custodians who started second shift start at $37,000. That hurts my heart. They are in the federal poverty level guidelines. And we have folks that are coming here supporting our kids every day. And it's almost impossible in the market that we live in here in Verona to allow them to even have a house. I quickly searched OnZillow last week. An average rent here room is $2,400 a month. An average house OnZillow is over $473,000. And those two things are conflicting each other. And it's our job to support and uplift and make sure that we are recognizing the hard work that our hourly staff do, and to make sure that we're able to compete for full-time candidates, and to make sure that we're doing what's right for our hourly staff.
Rochelle, really quick, I want to disclarify our stance as a, as a district. So it's not misconstrued. We talk about our SEAs, our SEAs, right, and so work with our students with IEPs. Students with IEPs deserve programming and deserve the supports that we, that we provide. It is a, it's a very complex position, but it's the right position and the right work because our students deserve those type of research. The law piece of it, but it's also our moral and ethical obligation to provide support to students that need this. So I want to make sure that when we talk about our SEAs and who we're co-serving, that from that student-centered approach, our students deserve that type of very strong, consistent support on a daily basis.
So this is something that you can find fairly quickly on our website and many of the websites for Dane County School Districts in the area. And I don't want to dive in too deep with that yet, but you can see what our beginning salaries are for many of our hourly staff groups and employees. And what you can see is that in comparison to the average, excluding Gazzino, the bottom, a majority of our beginning wages are less than the averages of our struggling service. We have talked a lot about post-approved referendum. That point, it gets us closer if it's approved. But again, we're not here just to say this. And so I am hoping that we can, we'll get a few things differently if we have a past referendum. And one, just like we've committed to up to this point, is ensuring a base wage adjustment to our hourly staff. The other piece is adding a flat $2 an hour per hour to our salary schedule for our hourly staff going forward post-approved referendum. And third, which is a longer conversation that we continue to do, is these collaborative conversations with Vespa to continue to look at the salary schedule in the whole and how we support our hourly staff through our work. Chad, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I think that, thank you to that Rochelle. My chat. I wanted to go into the next step, but wanted to see if the board had questions first. So we added to the bottom here the budget impact. The board has already weighed in on the post-referendum for 27%. That second line there is the additional $2 an hour. And our recommendation to the board tonight is to connect this to a past referendum. That we would, my recommendation would be not going down the road of spending one-time funding, which is what we would do if we buried it into a non-passing referendum. But we're recommending tonight that a piece, $600,000 of the recurring revenue authority we would get if the referendum were to pass would be allocated to hourly staff. And I'll go back to the salary schedule to see if folks have questions. The other thing that we did spend a ton of time, Rochelle and I actually talked about building a slide and made the decision not to kind of get into pointing fingers across town. But I, it doesn't, it doesn't take anyone very long to leave the board meeting tonight and see a help wanted sign before you even get to the sidelines for $19 bucks an hour. And then you can go through even just our city alone. You can see the employers that are looking and hiring folks that can beat the salary schedule that we've got posted on the slide right now. So it's not only about what Dr. Clarity said around finding super qualified people to do this work, it's also around just being competitive with the open market. And that's, that's a real thing. And it's more real than it's been in the past, I guess. I don't, I don't want to go on and on about this, but I have certainly seen this change in my tenure in public education, which now is quick push in 25 years. The days of a person starting a career as an SEA or a custodian, knowing this is my spot. I'm going to do this for 35 years. I can raise a family. I'm going to have making. I'm appreciative of the benefits. For the most part, seem to be behind us. And at some point, maybe the pendulum swings back the other way. But we are not finding a ton of people applying for these positions like, I'm old. I'm looking to make a 30-year career out of this and be part of the Wisconsin retirement system. That's why we see lots of the kind of turnover. And I think a big piece of that is that the market on the outside can compete for people like, in a way it hasn't in the past. They've been much more agile in terms of saying, we don't have enough people. We're going to bump this thing up $3 an hour and hang a poster in the window. And capable is not as malleable and flexible as certainly the night sector is. I'll leave it at that and see if you guys have questions when we can talk to the next steps. Questions or feedback?
Yeah, I just have a general comment to kind of tie it back to conversations we've been having around the referendum. It's just what we saw here is how grossly underpaid so many really important employees to our school district are. When you're looking at a full-time food service worker making barely over half the federal poverty level, and none, none of these full-time staff being able to afford to even live in our community, and how much that hurts our employees and hurts our students to be able to not support our employees and to be able to not fill, not have competitive applications for open positions, the impact that has on our students, and that we can't even begin to have conversations about addressing those problems without a past referendum. Because, I mean, there's just not simply money in the budget to be able even have those conversations. And what an important conversation that is to have.
Thanks, Richard.
Yeah, I think.
One more question or feedback?
As we were talking about, you know, these are positions that are really the engine of our schools. I mean, when we have these conversations during COVID with bus drivers, you can't have school if you don't have bus drivers. These are all of our, the people that are interacting with their kids throughout the day. If we don't have those people there, our kids don't have the education experience that they need. They don't have the supports that they need. In some cases, they don't have the actual systems to learn that, that they need. It's shocking to me when we see what we're, the going rate, even just in Dane County, compared to the private sector. And these are not year-round positions. That's the other challenge. And we do want our community to be in our district. We want our, our staff to be able to be part of our community. So I think this is, again, I think we have seen that there have been some compensation issues that have come to the forefront in the last, it's since 2010, that have been pretty significant. And I think it's good to be addressing it.
So next steps in terms of our work on the HR side. Where we have a final budget update coming up on October 24th that will be connected to the finance update that I have got to give. Our recommendations, and if I'm not hearing any opposition on the board side, will be to build a $2 an hour pay increase into our budget assumptions for a past referendum. And we will have a final levy and discussion if we get state aid here at our next board meeting. We will be communicating with our hourly staff regarding, regarding outcomes of the budget that is passed on the 24th. I see one public speaker that represents some of our hourly staff here tonight. I imagine there will be some buzz around the fact that this is at least a recommendation at the board level, and that we will communicate to our staff in terms of next steps that would take place if you had the referendum test. And then lastly, the HR team will be very busy in the event of a past referendum. We have back pay connected to our sign contracts with a 4.7% raise heading a past referendum. And then we have hourly staff to be around. So our recommendation would be to kind of take it in that order. Rochelle will have the first two buckets that we built in the budget for, and then the hourly staff increases take back December 1st heading the past referendum. That is on the HR side. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We will drag Mr. Grinder up here for a quick update in the world of finance, which I'm hoping will be fairly brief, but there is, there's some reasonably technical things we're going to give you an update on tonight. So we have the following things we wanted to discuss. An update on enrollment. We've made it to October, which means the Friday comes around. We have news on property valuation. We shared the board that time when I began. And we always said we'll have added pieces of information that get solidified that will make that kind of levy set on October 24th. We've mentioned the new budget assumptions around staff. We, and we screwed up some things relative to our budget assumptions there. And then we got those two spreadsheets that the board sound very familiar with that we've updated to share with you tonight. So we did get through the Thursday, Friday, come. I'm sure everyone think both Pete and Crady, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to meet Crady yet. He is our new power school person, and it's outstanding. Kind of worked him for the last couple of weeks here to pull off the enrollment update. You would think it is as easy as running attendance and counting students, and it's not. 90% of it is taken care of by running attendance on Thursday, Friday. But then there are little mysteries that have to be solved around students that weren't there that day. Showed up the day after, showed up the day before. Summer school plays a factor, 4K plays a factor, and open enrollment plays a factor. But it's a, it's an important number for us to continue to keep in mind. Big ideas here, and I'll certainly, if you guys have questions, let Pete help with some of the methodology around the difference between enrollment and FTE. So it's important for the board to remember that our enrollment number is students in seats, that some of these students were educating. And that went up 90 students, or 90 more students than we were the year before. The enrollment number is tied to open enrollment in and out. It's tied to 4K. It's tied to summer school. And it is more, it has a little more math and algebra worked into what we get for our membership account. And that is FTE, so full-time enrollment students. And that number went up 30. So as we are continuing to work with the board, as a reminder, that is the important number that we watch in terms of us getting added revenue commission on an annual basis. We only really get a third of it because EPI complies with three-year rolling average on FTE. We didn't get into a ton more detail on enrollment tonight. It's important to remember that we finally kick out the COVID year next year, I believe, when we went all districts in the state, including ours, saw a dip of enrollment. And that balances it out of the three-year average, which is a good thing. And we're up students, which is a good thing. So it is, it's always good news in terms of school finance if enrollment's going up and property values going up, and those are two pieces of good news we're sharing with you tonight. So I'll stop there. I don't know if Pete decided that reasonable job kind of summarizing where we're at. Let's see if the board has questions on enrollment.
I think he did an excellent job of this, Chad. The only thing I would point out on here is the last board point says, it's close to neutral budget impact. What, what I probably should have worded that is to say it's close to neutral as to what our projections are going to be. So not neutral to how things are from the prior year, but as to what we were looking at in the capital model trend, that's what I would.
The other piece I will share with you, and it's relative to the next slide, is that we, we accepted more open enrollment students in this year than we have at least in the recent past, and fewer students open enrollment out. So the open enrollment out, we don't have any control of. We can just kind of make an educated guess on an annual basis. Open enrollment in every year, the board helps set that number. We'll go through that again this coming winter. And it's just something to keep in mind that, and we'll kind of go through this. As we're starting to bump into capacity issues in some of our schools, it's a very important board decision, which becomes more important as we continue to add kids. So yeah, that open enrollment piece was a, was a factor in this year's seat count.
Chad, is it fair to say that the brothers' school is educating more kids than ever?
We are educating 90 more than the year before, and the year before was a record high. So we are at, we're certainly educating more students this year than we ever had in this year's school. Yep?
So think about that. This speaks to us being a highly desirable district. You know, it really, it's that message of the expectations of what we offer in our highest education. Our community expects, and that's what we're trying, not just to maintain, but to continue to advance.
I know, yeah. I think that as we get into the bus, further in the budget presentation, I think the health of our school district is also connected to property values. So those also.
And just looking at this, the net number of open enrollments, it looks from the graph that you have that this is the highest net number we've had, at least going back to 2016. Is there?
That is where we're going next. That is absolutely true.
Sorry, did I jump ahead?
No, it's a perfect segue. Yeah, so that is true. Our math has, you can see here the yellow line, it's, in some ways, it was like a double negative. Kind of the positive track. But the yellow line is the one to watch. So 2016, we had just north of 50 students more coming to our district than were leaving via the state's open enrollment process. And then for a couple of years, we were trending closer to zero. 2021, the 2021 school year, we dipped below, where we had more students leaving than were coming. And then we've been on an uptick for the last couple of years. And it is a number for our enrollment team and the board to keep an eye on in terms of where we're comfortable with school capacity kind of setting. And I think a, a past referendum potentially plays a role in that, that this, the open, how many students we accept on open enrollment does have budget impacts as well. So I think what we, we will go into this discussion a little bit deeper when we get here. And in general, it's good news. And in general, it's good news for the budget to have that yellow line north of zero.
Chad, can I ask you a question to link to that? So I was just looking at the changes in grade levels, and I know there's always just some natural variation. It seems like the kindergarten and 4K had significantly fewer, and is there any thought around that? Or is it just a normal fluctuation? I would have thought like open enrollment, that we accept more at the beginning of grade bands usually. So I was just surprised that that kindergarten number is now?
Yeah, we've, our, the population and MDR are growers. They have been tracking a smaller cohort of students kind of through the pipeline and did see this coming. There are, there are other factors at play that in general, families in your traditional buy a three-bedroom house are having fewer babies than they've had almost historically. Our birth rates in standard residential housing is actually higher than the county average. But you, if you pick up the newspaper, I just saw Stoughton the other day. Even though Stoughton is doing some building, they had declining home just because folks are having fewer students. So our residential growth is helping him keep that number at bay. But this is, we think, just an anomaly with a couple of years here. And that's why we bring the population lab and MDR to keep an eye on it. But you are, you're correct, we've got a little, a little bubble that we'll see if it makes adjustments. Families move in, if you get whole students back out of kindergarten is a factor as well. You know, we were, you know, we're kind of still, still inching our way out of the global pandemic. And families may have decided, yeah, we're going to wait one more year before we have to go there. So we'll, we'll keep an eye on it.
So it could just be a normal fluctuation. I know classes just vary in size, and sometimes they're bigger or smaller.
Yep. Without a doubt. Other questions on enrollment? Okay. Reminder to the board regarding this mistake budget process in general, that we will be up for our next budget, but we still like, we have a solid six or seven months, if at least, before we actually get to a signed budget. It typically happens actually closer to July. So a lot of the work we're doing relative to the budget is very important and will be set before we actually find out what's in the next budget we have to work through. How long we're going to set here at the next board meeting. But just want to keep those dates in mind. We have had a few questions from the community around the DPI proposed budget. It just popped here a couple of weeks ago, and this is kind of our slide to unfold that. Just because DPI proposed the budget, and the governor will hand over a hundred-page budget, joint finance committee has announced it around, and eventually the governor sums it, and we don't even go to the governor's DPI. So lots of work before we get to July. Our two-month look ahead as far as what's going on with our budget, we just walked, broke through Thursday column. Pete and I are going to go through property valuation with all of you. We get state equalized aid on the 15th, and that is the last shoe to fall. When we get on the 15th, the puzzle will be completed. Our last six months of work together scrutinizing two budgets, for the most part, will be set on the 15th. Pete and I will have, you know, several four-hour sessions in the Budget Cave. By the time we get between the 15th and the 24th, to make sure we haven't missed anything. And then on the 24th, we will break two recommended levies with identical no rates to the board on the 24th and ask for your approval. And we've got election day coming up on November 8th. All right, next, property valuation. A reminder that increased, and I wrote this in our leadership update this last, this last week. Property value can be a two-edged sword. That you would, we will, it's good to be in a position if you have growing enrollment and growing property taxes. That is a good thing. In general, it's good because when we have more property to tax in our district, whatever we pass as a levy is passed evenly to all the property that the school district essentially has taxing authority over. So if there's more property tax base, it means you're spreading the taxing burden. That's a good thing. The other side of that slide from the page is that if our property value goes up faster than the rest of the state, and we think it will this year, that that hurts us on the state's calculation of follow-up. So that is, the whole idea behind the equalized aid is that the state and DPI come up with a fairly complex formula that Pete knows the ins and outs of, that tries to equalize the playing field. Meaning, school districts that have a higher number of students and a lower ratio of property value, the state's going to give them more aid, equalizing the playing field in theory to try to make sure that school budgets in general are the same, that everyone's dealing with about the same set of playing cards on an annual basis. So this is a good thing. I wanted to kind of show you some historic in terms of what happened here. So this is what, where we've been at really for the last 10 years. You can see it's kind of been all over the board. On average here, we're not closing out a tid, and we don't have a global pandemic. Things are kind of between 50% and 80% on growth of property value. We had 2015, 2016, Jeopardy question of the day, what happened in 2016? And we had 23% up in property value. Epic, the epic tables. So we brought on Epic, which was nearly a billion dollars property value in a single year. And then this year, we had a smaller tid closure in terms of what we saw in Pittsburgh and Verona. And then we saw historic high inflation that went along with historically high property values. So you can see, board, we went at 18.6% in one year. So for perspective, our school district property in 2013 was worth $2.7 billion. We almost went up $1 billion in one single year as our property values. So that's, that is a big number, and we'll have implications in what we're recommending for building. Questions on property values? Okay. So we're going to connect that now to our recommended budget adjustments. So I, we mentioned already, we are recommending a passing referendum budget of $2 an hour pay increase under the board's pad. We want new property values reflected in our new worksheet. We have continued to work on making sure the people that we have on board now as we get to October, that we can prorate and extrapolate what they're going to end up costing us over the fiscal year. So Pete and Rochelle have been working on that. We're recommending tonight a lower mil rate, lessening in back of property taxes, but also keep an eye on remaining on debt and running our school district. So here we are, and we're going to see what we can do. And this is a new lower number. I foreshadowed this at a couple of board meetings in advance. Here's our mil rate history and what we're recommending tonight. So the same as, we kind of took the same timeline that we did with property valuation. You can see there, 2013, we had 12.27. We floated later on 12 until we passed that referendum. And then we already came on board at 12.77. You know, we were sitting around 12.77, 12.88, 12.64 was last year's mil rate. Tonight, we're bringing you a new recommended mil rate at $11.25 per $1,000 property value, which will drastically help folks who may see new property values associated with assessment of their property this year. This is a very busy spreadsheet the board is now familiar with, two of falls. A few things I wanted to highlight that we built into our assumptions. Now, the number 18.6 exists about two-thirds of the way down in that fiscal year 23 column that we're working in. So that is 18.6%, and you can see now we've got about $6.1 billion property that we can tax against in terms of that mil rate. And I wanted the board to continue to track some other things we've built into this past budget assumption sheet. 30 students in terms of our increased enrollment. And keep an eye on that aid number, which we're guessing right now is actually $1 million. And the rest of this, the board should be very familiar with in terms of us passing a budget. As a reminder, this is our non-passing referendum budget. We worked in some tid money and some messer money to close the gap, to make sure we headed down this budget. But you can also see that we are forecasting if we had a CPI raise, added staff, and property values flattened out, that we would quickly run a very big debt deficit. And that's what we've been working on now for the last five months, and really why we've got a question on the numbers that. So good news here is that we've lowered mil rate and hope that not passing in the passing budget. We have a signed contract and we're willing to get through this year in the event that the referendum did pass. But we would have very difficult decisions to make in the future if these assumptions are close to holding true. Number two is the budget worksheet for our past referendum. Here, we don't have lead numbers for these three years, and again, these are all assumptions. And the mil rate is still holding the same, so our message to the community stays the same. This is a mil rate neutral referendum. This is a mil rate now that we are dropping over $1.25 to help lessen the burden in terms of property values increasing down the road. I'll pause there. I guess I have no more thing. We, Pete and I likely won't break back $1.25 here in two weeks. We've got to get aid on set. If aid comes in higher than we thought it would, we may actually recommend an even lower mil rate. If aid comes in worse than we thought it would, there's a chance we recommend a slightly higher mil rate. Because again, the more, the more state aid we get, the less we have to burden in terms of local property taxpayers. And it's inverse. If aid tanks, we'll have to give, we'll have to pass more on to property taxpayers.
Chad, can you clarify though, the state aid is lower than anticipated. The proposed mil rate would not. When you said higher, it's not higher than, you know, than like last year. It's higher than 11.25.
We're talking, it feels good right now. We're down to, I'm guessing, nine to ten minutes. So it may come in at 11.25, but the fact that we were like, we had so many variables that we've been working through the last few months. Aid is the last one. Part of the reason Pete's in this room is his amazing ability to guess and make educated guesses on aid. But that's the last, that's the last shoe to fall here for us to set the final question. So Dr. Clarity, I'm guessing within the nickel of 11.25 is where we'll probably get that.
And just want to clarify, we're talking even, it may come in within a nickel of 11.25. We've been like talking best case scenario when we're talking about a referendum of like 11.
11.78.
Okay, I didn't want to say it. It can be wrong. It was like 11.78, so that's what we've been, we've been hoping that we would be able to hit, but we're now coming in significantly under that.
That's true. Yeah, the biggest piece that has changed from when all the referendum materials were printed was we started to get more and more information in terms of what was going to happen with the property values. So we're, we're not taxing out all the referendum materials and saying, it's not 11.78, it's 11.25. Our message stays the same. This is a mil rate neutral proposal. We'll certainly share the information sessions, or which coming up on Thursday, that we're working with the board and guessing that we will, that we will finalize a budget that is well below the 11.78 that we had printed a month and a half ago when we knew less about what was going to happen with the state budget. It is certainly working with, about making sure that we get the message out on social media, get it up on our website, we'll put it on our local media in terms of what our finalized mil rate is set at, both passing and not passing. But Meredith, you're, you are correct. It's well below what we had printed because our assumptions are no longer assumptions anymore. They're starting to become that.
Well, I think as we've gone through this, we've wanted to be cautious and wanted to be conservative in our estimates, and still coming in a dollar under the existing mil rate or close to a dollar, under our existing mil rate was substantial. It's a huge, again, we want to always be respectful of the taxpayers and recognize that this is a tough time all the way around. But coming in a dollar 40 is pretty exciting.
It is, absolutely. And so, and we are still, we're still sticking to our strategy of at least in the short term here, continuing to aggressively prepay debt and setting ourselves up for future capital expansion without the tax impact, or variable tax impact. So those strategies are still in true, but this is also a mil rate that is very responsive to, you know, essentially questionable for our taxpayers.
So we've got this slide. This is far and away, and I understand 11.25 isn't going to be the exact number unless Pete's guessing is really good.
Right.
But it's going to be close to it, and it seems like no matter what, we're going to be significant. That's going to be significantly lower than any mil rate we've had, at least going back to 2013. And I've seen data going back even further than that. Do you happen to know off the top of your head when the last time our district had a mil rate as low as 11.25? I didn't mean to give you any searching.
We've got, we pulled it. I think it's only, our mil rate's actually only dipped below 11 like one time in the last 30 years.
It was in 2007.
So this is historically low in terms of what's happened. It, we should also, we should also keep in mind that, with that, again, I want to delve down on this. We're not abandoning the board's strategy around prepayment on debt. This is, what I am hoping is a one-time nature adjustment because of tid closure and record-high property values going up. And then we get that into a steady flow of the board having a goal that mil rates stay relatively steady. That you don't want to get in a pattern from a yo-yo on mil rate that we're kind of chasing a bouncing ball here. We've made a one-time adjustment because of, we're going up at 18%. And then into the future, a relatively flat mil rate that may be slightly adjusted if we have higher years relative to property values. So, oh, sorry, go ahead. My eyes are getting a little old here, so I've got to zoom in a bit more. So if we're looking for the last time it was under 11.
11.25.
11.25. It. 11.25, it was 11.58 in 2008, 2009. The year before that was the only time that it was ever under 11.
Okay. And the other comment I wanted to make is just to be very clear to any members of the public that might be watching, because we talked a lot about increase in our tax base, and a part of that is the tid closures, but a part of that's also increases in assessments. And so I think we just need to be very clear that that's not something that we control. We don't do assessing of property values for the purposes of taxing for the school district. The only thing that we control is this mil rate. And we're not, we're not blind to the fact that assessments have gone up. We all live in the community too, so we're seeing the same thing. But what we control is this mil rate. So I just wanted to make sure that that was abundantly clear.
Exactly right.
Chad, can you just clarify for members of the public, still, we still have two red lines there. Is that just because the future assumptions may need to be tweaked a little bit? Or why are those two red numbers still there?
Yeah, so that is, that is all kind of, and you know, I think even our last few months here have proven the best we can do is forecast in the future. So those, the assumptions built into that slide would be if we got $19 million of added revenue authority, and then we've built some assumptions in terms of what happens with the state budget. That's the biggest area. What happens with how many students we have, what happens with property values, and what happens to inflation. So all of those are giant leapsters. At this point for next year, when we started this work six months ago, we were speculating a $100 per student add from the state budget. Now, if you've seen what DPI released, they're recommending over the next two years, that number exceeding, I think it was close to $1,000. They were like 3.50 and 6.50 in terms of per pupil permission. If that number came in, it's a very big reminder to the board, that would likely mean that we wouldn't need to use a lot of the added revenue authority that our local voters would give us with the past referendum, and we'd sit up. We would not need to use that. And that would mean those rev numbers would stretch out into future years, and we would be in the black longer if the state came in better than we thought they did. If deflation hit and we had a year without any staff raises, we would stretch. If deflation hit and we had a year without any staff raises, we would stretch that nineteen million dollars farther. So, there's just, there's so many variables that go into it, but these are just conservative guesses, but informed assumptions for what the next five years look like for us. Any other questions? Okay. We'll, we'll figure out what happens with state aid, and Pete and I will be back at this thing to put a bow on six months of this work, and these, us being cross-eyed at these spreadsheets, one final time as we pass eleven on the twenty-fourth. And then this is going to be it for me. Reminder, we're still in the community, having these exact same types of discussions with our community members. This week, we are on our way to Savannah folks at six o'clock, so if any folks are watching the board meeting, or friends who might be interested in this, we will be at Savannah at six this week, and then have something happening in our community every week leading up to the referendum to make sure folks are as informed as possible. Meredith, I think to your point, as mill rate questions come up, I'll make sure that the work we've been doing relative to this with the board over the last month, and that we've elected not to attempt to cause confusion by changing projected mill rates, and we'll just make sure people have the information, is the best information available.
Thank you both for the work that you've done, this has been a lot of things that we've asked you to balance. Obviously, payment, you know, making sure that we can, you know, provide the staff with the compensation that they need so we can truly have well-class schools in our district, keeping our community in mind when we're talking about taxes. Community mill rate, because it's looking really, really good. There's a lot of things that we had to, to juggle over the past few months, so we appreciate it.
Thanks is reciprocal. Couldn't do without, you guys, you know, all of the attention we've had. So, Dr. Clarity, that's all we've got.
Much appreciated, thanks, thanks both of you for a very fair presentation. All right, as we transition, our next thing on superintendent's report is monitoring report for OE nine. You have a hard copy in front of you, but you'll, if you can look inside your email I did, send the, another copy to the top of your boxes for you to open and refresh. We saw one link that was being a little wonky, so if you could open that one up and make sure you have the right, the right link. That'd be, that'd be great. All right, thank you everyone, we're going to run a transition to the next item on our agenda, which is operations policy, operations policy number nine, which is communicating with the public, with the public monitoring report. This will be the second of our monitoring reports following OE two from our last board meeting on the twenty-sixth, and you have the documentation of evidence in front of you, as well as electronic copy for, for your review. Some of the things that we want to remind our, our board as you're preparing for this, what a monitoring report does, it really helps us understand information for support and advocacy of our district, and really is our, our sense of accountability to you are board, did we hit the indicators that you have indicated that we would need to be in, in compliance? I want to quickly go over the executive summary, and then I'll turn it over to Marcy to give some dialogue on, on the evidence. Before that, I want to just re round us in our original policy. Superintendent, I'll show the public is adequately informed about the condition and direction of the, of the district, is their overall policy. What we've known to be true is that while there is a policy, it's the value statement where our board believes that truly matters. What our board agreed to invoke was that the value statement was that values frequent, clear, accurate communication to all VST stakeholders through multiple modalities. Board of Education expects the superintendent to model and promote service leadership and communication that is honest, student-oriented, oriented, and is aligned with the mission, vision of the Broner, Broner School District. So, with that in mind, we have provided a report based off those indicators that we will put in your hands shortly for, for review. And we look at the executive summary, it's going to remind us where, where we started. This, if we go down to the original exception that was on October eighteenth of twenty, twenty twenty-one, the exception of it was a redasment, Navas vote. What was a little more complex, and I think rightly so, because communication itself is complex, and there's different ways, there's different ways to look at it, were some of the amendments to the superintendent's proposal, and this one had three amendments for OE nine, is that we had a value statement, which I just read to you to the interpretation, and that vote passed for one. We were to modify and indicate to measure efficacy for two-way dialogue, and that was at a three to two vote, and exclude current interpretation of strategic two-way dialogues of the, to be revised to capture the board's values, which passed three to two, and that again resonates in the one, in the new value statement that was approved by, by our, by our board. So, I just want to give a quick reflection of how we got to this, got to this place. So, some of the topics that we, we need to discuss tonight is our, we hit the expectations of input on the direction of the district, and we are going to have some questions for board about intent on some of the indicators, and we'll get further into that discussion during our, during our presentation, where we want to make sure that we are, we are hitting the mark on your, on the board's expectations and those the community's expectations, and so you'll see in one of the indicators for sure, we just want to make sure, are the way that we thinking about the indicator, the way that the board intended, because we know that can be very, very complex. Okay? So, Marcy, I'm going to turn it over to you to begin us going in, and we'll attack team this presentation throughout.
Sounds good. Looking at indicator one for OE ninety-one.
I'm sorry, I got to interrupt the board. The board, we're going to, because there's only two sections, but they're pretty in-depth themselves, we're going to ask that we're going to present just the first part of indicator one, foster question, and then we'll go to indication there, so we're going to do a report, board, and all.
Okay, great. Indicator one was that the Broner School District would develop a family engagement survey, and that the results of the family and community survey would indicate sixty-five percent of families agree that the district has the culture of two-way communication. There are several artifacts listed that demonstrate the development of the climate survey, which was distributed to students, staff, and families, and the board had a few different presentations on that. We worked with Hannover Research, as you know, to obtain a psychometrically sound climate survey with questions on several different constructs, and we also added three additional items that were reflecting the indicators themselves that the board had developed, so those aren't questions that are typically part of the climate survey itself, but Hannover added those at our request. Now, we reviewed the process in the report whereby families were informed of the survey and received the survey link, and then had a series of reminders over two, two weeks, we tried not to badge them too much, but wanted to remind them that it was there, very box with them in complete. We had a little over thirty-nine hundred total survey respondents, which our consultant that we were working with, that was a great response rate. And then, as you may recall, Hannover presented a climate survey presentation to the board where they discussed the sample and the outcomes and recommendations for the future, and the board engaged in a climate survey workshop to dig a little bit deeper in the survey results. That takes care of the first part of that indicator, and then there was a goal that sixty-five percent of parent respondents would agree that VASD has a culture of two-way communication, and in fact, fifty-four percent of our parent respondents, or five hundred and one of our parent respondents agreed, or some have agreed, that VASD has a culture of two-way communication. And one of the things that we like to do with these questions is to compare it to, there's not a great big national sample out there for us to compare it to.
So, I want to, I want to pause us there on that one, and just kind of lean in what to what Marcy stated. So, what I appreciate about our board is that our board is innovative, and I think really rightly so, asks the right questions. Also, the other note is that when there's innovation, there is not a comparison model to, to look for, and that's, that's okay, we don't need to wait on everyone else. We say we want to be a national model, right, so that means we have to take some steps beyond that. So, when I, when we think about where there's not an issue that we don't have a comparative national norm like this is the right percent, but we want to continue to think collectively as a board and as leadership, what, what percentages are realistic, and what is, what is the intent behind the number? What is it that we are seeking for our families to be able to know and understand?
And one of the things that we did to learn a little bit more and share with the board was disaggregated the data by school, not to set schools against each other or anything like that, but more so, so we could look at our schools anywhere near this target, and the schools that are closest to this target, what are they doing, how are they sharing information, and what can we learn from them and with them so that we can support other schools in doing that, and/or do it for the district as a whole?
All right, so, we're going to, we're going to pause there, and just, I realize I might actually do refresh, make sure it went to the top of your box there, so if you could, open your, your actual, probably email, and make sure that we have the, the most recent copy, we want to make sure that that data I've decided by my school link is the, is the right one for you. So, what we're asking the board to consider is, as a, as a team, as a superintendent, this was a two-part question, and one was about the, the survey itself. We marked ourselves as compliant with part one of it as we did meet, or we felt that we, like the board considered that we did meet the parameters of getting the appropriate survey up, ready, and delivered to our, our community. As far as the actual data point on the percentage of positive responses, we found ourselves not compliant with part two, if we did not hit that metric that was, that was put in front, that was put in front of us. So, we'll pause there for you to examine indicator, indicator one. A question I do have for the board, and when I say intent, when we talk about, we provide the disaggregated by school, was the intent of the question to analyze the, our community's feeling of central offices communication? Was it each building individuals communication, and if so, do we, do we need to then provide an average by totality of all of our buildings to get to this percentage point that you're, that are, the percentage point that you want? So, who, what are we most interested in building? Is it buildings, central office, both? And then, we would need to actually do like an average of our percentages across that? That make sense?
I think, speaking for myself, so feel free to disagree with me, but I think it's, for me, it's important to know what our district, our district's average, because that does count even all of our sites, or sites are not standalone. I think our sites, knowing the, the percentage for each site goes valuable for the reasons that Marcy said about looking to see maybe what strategies are being utilized at the site level that can be replicated more broadly, because I do think each site is going to contribute to the overall. But I think from the board level, I'm looking at district, because it is encompassing all of the different sites.
So, when you say district, it means like the central office number, or the, or the, like the average, central office plus the average of the four groups?
Yes.
The total number.
The total.
The total number, and so, we could take the total number, then kind of do a, divide by that final percentage, like average across our district.
Yes. Is that, mhm.
That's my understanding of the sixty-five percent.
And is it even that, or is it just taking all of the, all of the respondents?
Yeah, that, that's where I got lost to, isn't it just the total percentage of all respondents? How they answer that question?
You wouldn't have to disaggregate it.
Yeah. The disaggregation is helpful to know if there's variation within the district in how community members that attend those schools respond to that question, because that's useful to know, but I think in terms of compliance with the question, it's just the total percentage of respondents to that question.
So, you want the end, okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I wasn't here for this discussion, so.
And that would be that fifty-four percent, that is, of every parent who responded, fifty-four, four percent.
I guess when I was looking at the sixty-five-two, when it said percent of respondents, I was thinking in my mind, well, of course, it would be ideal if we had similar levels of partition, participation at sites throughout the district. We know that that may not happen, so when they're responding to the survey, you know, if one building has a significantly higher response rate than another, obviously, you're not looking at the whole district evenly then, but I was thinking at sixty-five percent of the total, so. I guess if there was a building or two that was, had a significantly lower response rate, I'd want us to work on trying to, that we're never going to get them all equal, even on a site, we'd want one much underrepresented compared to another site.
Well, that's an interesting question too, and I don't, I expect that they don't, but do you know if Hannover does any weighting like that, where they would, you know, give appropriate weighting to different sites based on their response rates? They're doing that?
My understanding is that this is not weighted, but if we wanted to...
But we could ask them to do it.
Yeah.
I think it's helpful just to see, just to strengthen ours and see where, you know, where we came in, and there is something I do want to say about just the percentages that we said, you know, a year ago. They were kind of like, you know, guess this, this is what would be a good starting point. And so, when it's saying not in compliance with, I guess, I'm, I do want to just kind of call that out as, this is, we're sending some baseline numbers, and I think that's an important piece to, to recognize that not compliant sounds kind of harsh.
I get it, I mean, as a, as a person that wants to please the community and the board, of course, I'm on there, but I also, and just in talking with our team and our relatives, like we, we had to take our best educated guess of where, where to start, and now that we know, I'd love the fact that we have disaggregated data across schools so we can do specific strategies, and we have some very strong community leaders that we can holler up from, and how do we take those models and make sure that they go district-wise, so.
Yes.
I, I have a question on, on this topic too. It seems like with the more recent ones that we've done, the more recent OEs, we've avoided setting hard number targets, and it said, said increasing is what the indicator is. Is the reason that there is an actual hard number on this one because this was at the upfront before we kind of figured out that was probably a better way to do it?
We were trying to be good at something we weren't quite good at.
I think that's actually fair, no, I think that's a fair, I think we were all kind of getting the hang of this, and this was number two, after superintendent's assessment was seen kind of now easy, looking back at it, but I think that this is one where, I do like having the numbers. I think that it, it's, it's not good or bad, I think we needed to start somewhere, and I think we've talked about if it says increasing, that when we come back around with the next monitoring report, we might want to add.
Yeah. It's a whole lot easier to have a number now than we have a baseline to work off of.
So, you just kind of jumped ahead, and so, it's a pretty, but I also appreciate that the numbers are not, even if we didn't reach a bar for compliance, the number was not undershooting. I'd rather be aspirational, and that to me is better than, okay, we, we set a low bar, so we cleared it, I'd rather aim high and, and come post but miss, and continue to work, you know, progressing towards that.
And I'm sure that Hannover or, or any research scientist would be happy to dive into, is this the right target, is it not the right target, what's the efficacy of the question itself that you're asking, you know, maybe in more depth than anyone would care to, but there is, you know, there is, you know, could be some value to that as well, certainly folks out there who do that.
I want to say something about the number two. I agree with you, I'd rather set a higher bar, because if we are going to be in a situation where we're constantly looking at results and every time we're compliant because we didn't set it aggressively enough, then you start wondering, not that we don't want to be compliant, but we don't want to be compliant one hundred percent of the time to the point where you start believing that the goals you're setting maybe are not high enough. So I, I didn't think it badly that we weren't compliant the first time around. I mean, literally, we've only been at this a year and the number was sixty-five and just kind of just something to aspire to. And, you know, fifty-four is not, in my opinion, that far off. So I don't think that's, that doesn't, to me, is not worrisome.
Is it jumping ahead in the process to talk about what we want that indicator to look like going forward?
Let's go through the monitoring report and then we can circle back to kind of a review of indicators after we've done a goal of approving this.
Makes sense. We did, we did, we did put it as a discussion based on some of the sort of things from O E two, run indicators, so I think we can, so what indicators in general, it's on, per the board action. So very simple, sorry.
Indicator two was utilizing a community-based survey of the sixty-five percent of respondents will express they were adequately informed about the direction of the district. We collected this information from staff and from parents and had a similar rate of respondents saying they felt this way, thirty-six percent of staff respondents and thirty-seven percent of parent respondents, which is short of the original indicator goal of sixty-five percent. And I think leads to a similar conversation that we just had regarding data being available by school and us being able to look at that. And this also is a question specific to V A S C that we had added to our survey. So we're pioneers in that way, but that we don't have a national, or the rest of Hanover's dataset to compare that to.
I'm curious, kind of looking at this one in combination with indicator three.
And indicator three was that the district will offer five or more wage modalities for stakeholders to provide appropriate input on the direction of the district each quarter during the school year. And we listed out various opportunities that folks had to do that. We were mindful of these being opportunities where they could actually provide input on the direction of the district. It's not every single time we communicated with someone or every single time we sent out a, a letter or a video, it's actual opportunities for them to provide input. So we listed out a court of education meetings, our student, parent, and staff advisory meetings, and those were items that helped us meet those goals in quarter one and quarter two. And then in quarter three, we had those in addition to referendum staff information sessions and community information sessions, and then our climate survey. And again, in quarter four, we had our board of education meetings, our advisories, and continued referendum information sessions for the community.
As well as our strategic framework session.
Can you remind me what the date, or rough date of the climate survey was?
It was in May.
So in, in, in looking at indicators two and three, at the, at the request of our president, we, we, we met the, we, both of us compliant in the meeting, the modalities and the opportunities. We were very cautious to try to keep the spirit of what the, of the board's intent and only put areas where it was two-way communication. There's a multitude of communication that was one, one-way, but the board asked us about two-way communication specifically. And so in that, in those areas, we, we get the metric of five or more per quarter, and I think, when you think about it over a year ago now, you didn't think the quarter piece would be as complex, but the quarter piece actually became a little more, because it's, you're actually trying to make sure it's done every, every nine weeks and have that many, that many sessions. So that's the bar necessary, and we will, we will hit it and do, and do better. But we also see that when we look at indicator two, speaking of communication, we, we want to make sure that our, we better communicate and help others, especially what do we really need with these power questions? And I think when you read that question itself, you can read that in, in multiple areas. Like, for instance, how can I say yes, that I know the direction of the district, and at the same time you're asking me to participate in the strategic framework, because we haven't built it yet? So what am I responding to? Am I responding to that I know, or yes, I know that this is, these are the steps we're taking to, to, to move forward? So it's there, very well-meaning questions initially, but we, we have to kind of think through, how are we explaining what, what information our board desires?
I think this is interesting to see, like the more in-depth O E, as we're kind of looking at this. This is one where I think there's more need to be indicators and kind of looking at it, how do we, how do we take this? Because I'm looking at indicator three kind of ties more to indicator one, and indicator two is kind of more standalone, I think. So if we, maybe the question is for, for you both, how do you take the, the indicators, especially like, let's say, indicator two? And again, I think, you know, we, we've talked about not being in compliance with a, a, a number that was kind of guessed is okay. I think I'm okay with that. But what do you, what do you see this information and, and having to move forward with it?
So indicator two, we, we took all of them seriously, but if you, I think everyone here was at our complication. You've heard to almost nauseous, you know, we, we had our full staff recite by calling response, what the direction of our district was. That was, that was intentional. So that's, that should, we want that delivered as an example of how seriously they did that question of making sure everyone understood that. Dr. Harkins was on the stage at the time, stated, everybody tell me what are, what are, what are, what are our goals? Collaboration, transparency. And so that while it may, it may motivate, like, why are we saying it over and over again? Because we mean it, we know this is what changes lives for, for our students, and we want to make sure that every staff member knows. We want that same type of intentionality with our, with our, with our parents. And so from the board meetings where we have it now on our screen to every communication that goes out, that is front, that is front and center, we put it there for those, for those reasons. So it's a long way of saying it's, that is the, is the right question, because you want to know that our, our community is well-informed. Again, the percentages are best guesses at.
Yeah, and I think it's interesting, I mean, I think our staff especially focusing on our staff feeling well-informed is so critical, because they're our best advocates with their parents. They're the ones who I think are our most trusted public liaison, they are, they're the ones talking to parents all day. They know everything. So I think focusing in on that, if our staff feel more informed, I think our parents will also naturally feel more informed through that.
I will, I will say that the, the one piece of the question that could be, maybe we want to think about it as a word, as a word direction. Like, what, what is that there?
Would that be?
Is that, is that our academic focus? Is our, our climate focus? And like, what, what is? So, but I, I don't, I wouldn't put it into like a, like a wordsmith situation, I just, again, it's the intentionality, make sure everyone knows when we ask this question. This is one of them.
And I would add to that, that we definitely sought out opportunities to share this information with the community as well, while, while still be strategic, but, you know, inviting news reporters and, and early morning TV news crews right into our school and trying to get the word out there in print, on television, in addition to things that we're sending out, right? So that it's things that are landing in, in people's written materials, things that are landing on their televisions, and really trying to emphasize the direction of the district in those communications as well.
I do think the timing, just with this strategic planning, I think that's an interesting piece that I had kind of put together. I mean, we are at kind of a crossroads a little bit, so.
I think your question speaks to something that I asked a while back, and hopefully going through the process of strategic planning, it's something that's borne out. You know, we talk a lot about, we have a mission statement, I think we have a vision, we have, it was an R one results policy. We have all these different statements that are titled under different headings. And when we ask the question, what is the direction, which is yet a different prompt than many of those key in statement slash responses? Like, it, it's hard to find a unitary, like, this is what we do in all of that. And the, the irony, of course, is that, you know, the, the, our, the results policy provides exactly that, like, this is the overarching where we're going, and then, you know, fitting in the particular, you know, aims or goals for a particular year, you know, like the North Star, things like that, can work towards that. But again, when these are all different, categorized as different things, then again, you ask, what is the direction? What was that direction in terms of vision, mission, results, North Star, like what, which direction? Are all of those things aimed towards one direction? You know, I mean, so I, I think that that question about this direction, the right word, really gets at, because I would venture so far as to say that, yes, we're guessing at whether or not the sixty-five percent was the right number, but thirty-six and thirty-seven percent is definitely not the right number. And so I think that that's, that question about direction is important, and maybe can key us in. Again, and I'm always that guy, I'm that guy, the words matter, right? Right? Because they cue people in, in this case in particular.
I think, so if you're staff member, are you thinking academic direction? If you're a parent, are you thinking things of financial direction? I mean, what are, what are the different, we've got a lot of directions that we.
It was a parent thinking more like the direction in terms of what you're doing for my kid, right? And what does that even mean? I, I've got three kids, I don't know what that means. So direction might be, it's a big question.
So for example, we, Dr. Harkins, I'll roll a call today with our strategic framework partners as we think about our next step. The question was, did or we might need to do a mission statement? Like, no. We, our board policy is our mission statement, which is our, which is, which is our one. There could be a vision that we look at, and there could also be a, we, we talked about looking at equity statement, but those are things that are support of a policy that our, our board set, this is our, our North Star, our, is a strategy to support that, that policy. So if anything, if we could move it from direction to a very clear statement here, this is what we want you to know. And our one is the one that is the, is the result policy, or is the policy that we have used to guide our academic leadership, this decision-making. So I, but again, that's not, that's a board action that I, that I wouldn't say, but I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear of how we're thinking about the power of this, of the policies that our board built as our, as our major mission.
And the question is, when you're asking the parents that, you know, although we read our results policy at board meetings and such, I doubt any parent would actually say, oh, I know that there's this results policy, it's just.
Well, there's also wanting to see what, what steps are taken to move us along in that direction. That's really the, there's, it's not there.
I think, and there's, if there's, there's, we do have a rev, I mean, if you ask like, most, like, most people are going to still say, every, every mission must be successful because it's on everything. And so that's, that's not our result policy.
I was wondering too about our bilingual communities, because when I was looking at the evidence, there were just a couple places where we call out that we did provide, you know, two-way communication in Spanish, but it did make me wonder if something like core levels should be listed on here? I don't know if there was consideration given to that, but I would just say that maybe going forward to think about that, because it did stand out to me that I wasn't sure if we thought really fully about the opportunities for two-way communication for that population. So that would be something to consider.
I think the way you just explained the results policy and then how things are supporting to that was really clarifying. I think that should be a part of, you know, everything that we do, you know, especially with like the strategic framework, that's much more about listing out values. At least that's what it was last time when I participated in it. It's about listing the values that support that direction or that mission statement, not replace necessarily. So yeah, I really like that, that was, the way you explained it was a great one.
Okay.
So we know that was just the first indicator, but we're going to roll to number two, if that's okay. Marcie, good.
Indicator one, under O E ninety-two, was that the board received by August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, a copy of the annual progress report that is made available to the public via print and online, including data on student progress, open friends results policy, close friends, information about district goals, programs and operations, and budget information. For indicator one, there are several links to data about student results that the board and therefore the public had access to over the course of the year, with a primary focus on star data. And not only did we include information that the board received, but also information that was in the press and or on television. And then for information about school district strategies, programs, and operations intended to accomplish, accomplish the board's results policies, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget and annual meeting book is linked with details provided on which components of the meeting book met the criteria. And same for item C, where we are looking at information on the district's financial condition, including revenues, expenditures, and costs of major programs. And the budget annual meeting book is linked, as well as an articulation is included of specific information that was provided there. And next year, we're looking forward to adding the student results section right into the budget annual meeting book, so that would be encompassed in there.
So as we close out nine point two, superintendent, I'd like to suggest in a compliant based off the evidence, of the multitude of evidence, and returning back over to the board for, for discussion, we, the recommendation from the superintendent is in compliance with exceptions, and you'll see the exceptions that you noted below, which we know is not compliant, but we look at preponderance of evidence, they were more compliant than not compliant, so we marked in compliance with the exceptions that were, that were, that that were noted. So unless there's any questions, I wish I could lay close this superintendent's board and turn it over to the board, to the board action.
Any other questions? And then just a reminder, you know, this is the board's opportunity to exercise our oversight role, and this is how we judge whether the district is moving towards the goals that we've set through our policies. So kind of keeping that in mind. Did you have some stage on the circuit?
No, I think you're brought to answer, so go ahead.
I don't think I am. Go ahead, what were you going to say?
I was just going to ask, I was just going to kind of ask, like, so are we, we accept the report, but then we have a conversation about like what we want going forward?
First, we're going to, yeah, we're going to, so at this point, I'll accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented, so the board can begin our conversation just about whether or not the indicators have satisfied, I mean, the evidence has satisfied the indicators that are currently set. And then we will move after an overhaul vote to where you're headed. Are we, so do I have a motion to accept and approve as presented? So a motion from Christina, is there a second? And a second from John? Okay, so now the board can go ahead and discuss again. Okay, so now the board can go ahead and discuss, again, the, this, the report as presented. Let's start with OE, yes, starting with OE 9.1.
So now, is this where we can discuss, like, if we think the indicators should change for next year?
We will do that after we take, after we finalize the vote, approving this current policy.
Thank you very much.
So, we, I want to make sure that we're keeping the indicators as they are presented and not changing the target.
We're finishing this first.
Finishing this, keeping it in mind. So, with that, are there any questions about OE 9.1, anything about the evidence? And again, we want to make sure that the evidence is sufficient for the board to determine whether or not compliance has been achieved with the indicators that we've approved.
I find that evidence for indicator one to be entirely sufficient. I will also add that I think that our shot in the dark around 65% appears to be a good one, because while it is not compliant for this year, it seems like a good number to shoot for, if we're going to improve off the numbers that we got this year. I'm saying that now that Dr. Clarity's left, but he might make the difference, but that seems like that to me.
I like having more of an aspirational number rather than, you know, hit any each time, feels kind of.
It's easy for us to say we're not the ones who won't be in compliance.
I like you, Dr. Clarity, you have an aspirational number.
Joe, if I don't ask the question, I'm not in compliance.
But, I mean, what are we, what are we deciding? Are we saying, I mean, I agree with what the superintendent has noted on each of the indicators, that where the, where he notes not in compliance, I agree not in compliance, based on the wording of the indicators.
And I think the second part is, is the, is the evidence, and I think it's satisfied here, but I think just as we go forward, is the evidence that we're seeing, does it truly address the indicators? Is it, is it responsive to the indicators that we approved?
Yeah, and that's, that's somewhat easy, I think, for indicators one and two, because it's kind of directly tied to a specific question on the climate survey. So, yeah, and I think, I think on those two specifically, there's, there's very clear evidence based on the wording of the indicator, in my opinion.
Christina, anything for you?
Okay, I think the evidence is appropriate.
Yes, okay, so for 9.1, we're all in agreement with the superintendent's assessment of compliance for each of the indicators, is that accurate?
Can I ask a question on indicator three? Just because I wasn't here when we had this discussion, I wasn't on the board yet, what did we mean by ways or modalities? Because it looks like there are only four ways, but numerous opportunities within those modalities, and, and, so I was, it was hard for me to understand what to make of that.
So, I had a similar question.
Yeah, go to John.
My recollection was that it was not explicitly stated that modalities, to me, I think, meant something different than what I think is represented here. So, I think that's a good question, and I think that that might, asking that question might point us in a good direction, because the way I look at it is that indicator three here looks compliant, and I, I would argue that it is compliant, but if we clarify this notion of modalities, it might be that we see that maybe we're not doing something that leads to indicator two being very much not compliant, because my brain, and this might be illogical and unfair, so somebody stop me, would think that if indicator three is doing everything that we expect it to do, that indicator two would be at least closer to compliant.
So, I'm looking at indicator three and seeing it tie more to indicator one?
I am not, and I had this reasoned out, so let me get back to it.
Because I was talking to your reasoning earlier than I rethought myself with it, because that's bad.
Because I saw this less about two-way communication, and I know that that might be argumentative, so.
So, I think, are you saying indicator three was also? I think indicator three, we were, we were discussing modalities, and that may be something that we can come back to a little talking in our, in our indicator discussion afterwards. I think that seems like a fair, I think that's a fair question, and I do think we should circle back to that, and we can then to discussing the indicators next time. Are we comfortable with the evidence that's presented now and the assessment of compliance?
Yes, so we're coming back to that question, clarity around, yes, then I think, I think so.
Okay, let's take a look at 9.2, and first of all, I would like to say I love the to have everything here linked so easily, it's really nice. I'm, I feel like OE two is very straightforward for me.
I agree, yeah.
Yes.
That one too.
Who, I'm just making up numbers, and I just. No, I'm sorry. OE 9.2, just, sure.
Give me in relation to the annual progress report.
Yeah.
We want to talk about annual progress report, and that seems very, that's very cool.
Yep. Okay, so, based on the board discussion, we have a motion to accept and approve, are we ready to vote on that, and we can circle back to the mission indicators?
I, I have a question, and it's not so much specific to this one, but it's kind of philosophical going forward, because we're kind of learning this as we go along. This in compliance, but with exceptions. I heard Dr. Clarity say that one of the things that motivated, or that was behind them recommending that was, there was more in compliance than not in compliance. Is that the bar we're gonna use going forward? So, if, if there are eight indicators, and five are in compliance and three aren't, is that, if, are we then tying ourselves to saying that we're in compliance, but, or with exceptions in compliance? Because I can envision us, one indicator being so important to the OE, that being not in compliance with that one, even if the other seven are in compliance, that that would make the whole thing out of compliance.
I would say, you'll know it when you see it. It's the, you'll know compliance.
Yeah, all right. I wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that, so we didn't inadvertently get ourselves tied up in, if, if there's four indicators, three in one, you know, I, I don't have any disagreement with it as applied in this case.
Well, and I think if one of, another example would be, we're saying that the 9.1, indicator one, okay, that, so we didn't hit the compliance goal, but really, I would really, I wouldn't say that that is not compliant either, it wouldn't be sufficient enough to say this whole, the whole report is out of compliance, so I think there's going to be different degrees indifferently.
Yeah.
How far is.
But presumably, there could be for a different one, where an indicator is so essential to the OE itself, okay, got it.
That's a, that's a fair question, Joe, because I think about OE four, for example, if we hit all of the indicators except for one, and that one is that, we lost all of our staff.
Hard to say in compliance.
Yeah.
There are, I think there are some power indicators that would change our ability to support students if we didn't hit it.
Yeah.
So, Joe, again, before you were here, before we did all this, one of the ways that we saw this compiled into an annual summary of all the reports and all the indicators that supported those reports was something of a heat map, in green and red, that, in that sense, it's much more of a feeling.
Yeah.
To use that to kind of say, this is just a picture of, and, so I think that that might speak to your question a little bit, like, will you notice the big red blocks where it shouldn't be?
Got it.
And then there's also yellow bits, okay, we're kind of.
Yeah, we're kind of there.
Moving there.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good question. Okay, so with that, all in favor of accepting and approving as presented, signify with I?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, OE nine has been, the compliance report has been accepted as presented, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so while we're here, we've been circled into indicators, so we can have that discussion, so you have a full year knowing what, what we're shooting for, and by the way, I did say I like aspirational numbers for you. I don't know if that's fair, but that's what I, I like. So, we can look at that, and I think that's a good conversation to have when we're talking about percentages, because I do think we're going to be hitting percentage, when we've talked increases in the past, as we're coming up on each monitoring report, we're going to be setting percentage goals. What is the board's values in that? Do we want to make sure that we're hitting compliance, or do we want to make sure that we're setting goals that we're achieving, even if it means that we haven't achieved the, the goal that's set?
I like having room to grow, so I just don't, I, I don't see that a lot of value in always setting a bar where you're 99.9% or 100% of the time, you're complying, because it feels like, I'm a few, like, I would rather appeal with aspiration.
I also think that we're, this is similar to what we were just talking about, that we're not machines, we know that not every not compliant is created equal, so I think we're capable of knowing that if we set an aspirational goal, or a goal that's maybe pushes a little bit rather than an easy goal on in terms of percentages, that, that doesn't necessarily indicate failure in that, in that reaching the goal.
I think we're still in an aspirational place, because this is like year, we're entering year two of this, where we want to see some growth, but like, there's going to be a diminishing marginal returns for all of these indicators, which is why I've always been uncomfortable with the increasing. And there gets to be a point where, okay, generally, we're running things well enough to hit this indicator most of the time, and I'm comfortable leaving it where we're going to hit it, if that's appropriate, and then we're going to shift gears, like, what's the next indicator that we want to improve? What's a deeper thing that we need to improve? So, like, you know, the bad example would be, all right, we're looking at these disaggregated site data, you know, do we see problems there that we want to get into? Because the overall numbers hit our targets, and we don't want to worry about that anymore, we want to look at these individual sites. That's not a conversation that we want to have, that's just an example of how you might get in deeper, but right now, I think we're in a place where we can say, yes, it'll still be a little bit aspirational, there's still room to improve, you know.
And what's your comfort level as we go?
So, my, my hope and desire as a superintendent is that, I appreciate the indicators, because they give our leadership team a clear, a clear target. It is far more difficult to effectively lead on a moving target, and so, the numbers are, for, for say, I'm not worried about numbers up and down, it's the, when the spirit of the indicator shifts, then it's harder to do, leadership work, because now, the strategies that we have implemented to become in compliance are far different if, if, if the spirit of the indicator shifts, so, I, I think, if there is going to be a spirit of indicatorship or certification, just, the sooner we know that, the better, so I want to keep that separate, that number targets, because I'm not as worried about number targets, because, we'll figure that out, but I can't, I can't, it's hard to figure out a strategy if the spirit changes.
Yeah, well, and I think the spirit's always going to be linked to the board values statement, and we, that, that is, I don't think we're even contemplating in changing our value, our value statements. One of the things, you know, just as a reminder for the board, when we're talking about the indicators, we're looking at, does the evidence, is the evidence sufficient for us to actually measure the indicator? And I think that's a good way for us to kind of keep grounded, does the evidence, you know, respond to the indicator? And I think it, it does. If we're good with the numbers, do we want to, there was another question that we had, did you have something, Joe?
I had a couple, yeah.
Go ahead.
Are we good with, are, are we good with the numbers, though? So, 65% on both questions?
I think it might depend on the next conversation, if we're going to look at, maybe changing the wording away from direction, then maybe 65, if we keep this question exactly where it is, I don't know that that's at all realistically hard to.
Close that.
If it's, if you keep the word direction, I won't be long enough.
Right, and that's what I was gonna say, when you were saying we're not changing the values, the word direction is in our statement as a board, and then, and then, that, so, so what we look at.
When we are talking about, we have a, we have a board, the, the VASD Board of Education values, and then it's, that's not what, we don't have direction in that, it's in a policy, but we're talking about our interpretation of our values. So, that kind of, if you look at nine, the Board of Education values, a value statement underneath a policy, so what would you look at for?
So, if we, say if we were, to John's example, to switch the word direction to be far more explicit, that is it our, is it our, our, our mission, that I had the point about the mission and, or mission and vision of our, of our district, that is a clear, clear indicator that I need to, we need to make sure that not only are we getting information out, that we have evidence that our communities are contributing, and back to us, and our staff is contributing back to us, so I would, if that piece of it has for just a much narrower scope of what does that word mean? When do you, when the board says direction, what do you want?
And to John's point, that what the, just, what the OE says is the condition and direction of the district, that, I bet you'd get much different answers if you asked about, are you informed of the condition of the district? I think you'd get significantly different answers.
Right.
And then John's, yeah, I think you're highlighting kind of the, the definition of direction, is maybe the drilling down a little bit more depth for questions, is that accurate?
Yeah, so, so I think in, in building off of what Dr. Clarity's saying, like, do those things need to be explicitly stated in this definition of direction here? You know, when we're talking about, or is this definition more accurate, and that needs to be reflected in the question? And then all of this comes down towards, you know, how are we effectively talking about it and marketing or putting that message out, which is a different, not important conversation necessarily?
Or even if we just take the word direction and put the actual definition in there, if the definition of terms we put direction, shall be communication of the district's continuous improvement plan, action plan, changes, innovations, or initiatives, that's very specific to what that, but our, when we ask the question, the community doesn't know that's our definition of direction.
So, that could be just a, a question.
Yeah, I bet the handover group would have something to say about a question that might be.
So, the other thing I would have is a, a member of the public, if you include all this, action plan, programs, changes, innovations, initiatives, I guess as a member of the public, I think, well, I know something about one of those, I mean, that's a lot of buckets, so it's kind of like, I know something about programs, or I have something about innovation, so it's a lot of things that we're talking about when we're talking about direction, I'm just thinking, you know, someone's gonna know something about a program or initiative, maybe not about the action plan, but, you know.
To the board level, how the evidence comes to us is solely on, on you. We're, in our, the position that we're in is, are we comfortable asking about the direction of the district, knowing that the direction means action plan, programs, changes, innovations, or initiatives? And I, I still stand behind our indicators, and if you are changing the evidence that we will see next year, that's your discretion to do that, to achieve the indicator that we have approved.
That piece, I, I'm very comfortable doing, I, I think the question as worded, I, I found hardly able to get to 65%, because it's so, it's so broad that, I don't know that the, our, you know, desirable 5,000 respondents are not going to know what that, what that word is, so if I can, I can make us a suggestion, we have a, we're scheduled for our next retreat in the next four to six weeks, because on our, on our calendar.
Yeah, you've got a lot going on.
We have a board retreat.
A board retreat, yeah. The, I appreciate that the board or, or who the monitoring board, but I think, and I, I believe that to be correct, as we collect indicators that need to be reviewed, those are things I don't like to bring, like, allow our team to say, hey, this, bring these before the board, but remember, I, our team can't change the indicator without more.
So, my question, I guess, is, is looking at indicator two, is there a change to the indicator that we actually need? Because I'm looking at indicator two in comparison with the definition that has been provided, does that change, that may change, you may change the evidence that you collect to support indicator two, and that would be then changing the question on the survey, but the indicator itself, I think, if I'm looking at direction and, and reading it with the, the term, I feel like the indicator itself is still sound, maybe the evidence that you collect to measure that indicator might change.
And maybe the definition you use for direction. And maybe the definition you use for direction might change.
But that, and that would be a choice.
But that's not us.
What is the actual question we ask?
This is it.
Word for word.
Yes, how informed do you feel about the direction? So we're saying as a board, we're not going to massage or change that question. It's up to you to decide if you want panel or change that, or add more than one question about it, or whatever you want to do to get to the 65% expressed they are adequately. So however you choose to do that, if it's five questions on there, that's up to you. We're not, we are not in charge.
But our indicator two is still sound.
But just so we're, our job then, when we're a year from now, when we get this again, we still have to assess whether that question that they chose to ask on the survey is adequate evidence of the indicator.
Yes.
Okay, so if you go off and you ask a completely irrelevant question and try and report that's 7% response rate as compliant.
How many people care as crazy as they can get?
I mean, I'm just conjecturing, what if it's three questions? I don't care, I mean, maybe it's not one question that the public needs to be asked. Maybe there aren't, maybe there could be several questions drilling down on that, and then those will come to us and we'll say, oh yes, together, those questions comprise understanding that the public has showing that 65%, I don't know.
So I notice this take more about, I just, I'd like to, you understand that you're okay with us adjusting the power standard to give better evidence of the question that the board has asked.
I mean, you're kind of, you're kind of locked into using the Likert scale though. Because it does say you have to be adequately informed in the, but other than that, I don't think we can, some you.
Okay. We handle it.
Yeah, I think that, I think that gives you a lot of freedom, which is really the point. We want to know that people are informed, and how you measure that is discretionary for you. And then I think we had a question about the, about indicator three. And the term modalities. And I think it's kind of a combination of a question about our, our indicator. Do, does our indicator really express what we, or does that really express what we want? I mean, I think it does, but I think we want some clarity around the word modalities. Again, remember, as we said earlier, we were starting this without really, we're in a learning process.
Because how I read this, having not been here for the discussion, is, okay, there needs to be, in each quarter, five different modalities. But if each board meeting counts as a modality, then technically to be compliant, all you have to do is have five board meetings in a quarter, you know? Or does modalities mean something else?
And are we using, because I would say modalities would be different, different types. But here's so many opportunities.
Yeah. And so if, if it's different types of opportunity, there's only four listed here. In my head, I was like, I don't think that's completely, like, there's plenty of other modalities that aren't listed, and it wouldn't be practical to list out every single modality. One, probably the most common one you guys deal with is email. And you're very diligent at two-way communication over email with the community. And I didn't see that on here at all.
Right, or like I said, maybe quote unquote, I was just thinking, you know, oh, bilingual population. I mean, the fact that our board meetings, for example, are not translated means that modality, you know, for that population, not the best way of providing appropriate input on their part, but like something like quote unquote, where it is more accessible would be. So I'm just, I'm just looking at those modalities also as, you know, you're correct. But I, I would agree with Joe that this doesn't, this, this isn't comprehensive of everything that's provided for people to provide input.
My comment, when you were out of the room, which was unfair, was that I think that if we took modality to have a broader meaning, it would point us towards some things that we might want to do better. And, and I didn't say it this directly when you were out of the room, but now you're here, so, sorry. For example, when I think of modality, I think of a completely different means of communication. Like, not just in person, maybe it's through the internet, maybe it's a different structure for in-person. Like, where you're letting people come in instead of just selective focus groups or however you do it. But for example, that, this might point us to say like, how are we, how are we communicating with people digitally? You know, you guys are fantastic with email. I'm not familiar with what our presence is on social media, because I'm bad at that. I, as I've made aware, am critical of how utilitarian our website might be. Those are the directions that this question might point us to if we took a broader, a broader understanding of the word modality. I'm not sure that we want that here, but I wonder when we're talking about evidence, if bringing in some of that evidence would then help us explain a little bit of this 36 or 37% feeling informed, in addition to it being kind of a bad question.
So I think for our perspective, do we want to be looking at indicator three in a different way? Because I, I think this is a huge number of opportunities, which is really great. Is modality the word that we want to use? Do we want to be specific with a number? Do we want to be saying, you know, opportunities utilizing different modalities? What, what is the, what is the indicator? Because I think from the, the board's perspective, we want to know that the district is providing opportunities. And I, I think the evidence that you presented shows that. I think saying five modalities might be getting too constrained, too constrictive. Like, but saying numerous opportunities using multiple modalities, then there would be a, okay, well, we have inputs in a time of board meetings. You have your advisory groups responsive to email, that, maybe that's, and that might help.
I'm also wondering if mo, okay, this is just another wondering. Is, is modality the way to measure this? Or is it avenues for different stakeholders to provide appropriate input? In other words, you could have five modalities that all reach the same 40% of our district. And would that be sufficient if 60% of the people didn't have a good avenue for expressing their input? So, you know, having students, for example, if you didn't have a student advisory panel on here, and all modalities related to staff and parents, to me, wait a minute, we're missing students. Like, there was no modality specifically addressed. So did we as a board maybe overlook the fact that is it important which ways? Or is it important who is reaching? Or, or the fact that we're using avenues that reach different aspects of our population?
I want to get your opinion so far on where we're at, on this conversation. Because you are the one who will come back with a indicator. And I think you're just hearing, you know, this is our, our thoughts, this is too tied, too tied to the five modalities as opposed to the bigger sets of this.
Yeah, so I, I guess what's sticking to my head is, is like email. I, yes, we're responsible, but I can't imagine a culture where we're not responsible to email. So I don't even, I, I, but, but I, that's the, that's the professional nature of the, of the super community and leadership. So I, I guess, being the expectations of professionalism, I, I didn't put that here because that doggone issue is one thing. Our teachers want email, they're one shit.
So for us, though, we need to, we're just making sure that the district is responsive in different ways to inform. And so whereas to you, that's based on professionalism, I think that's also then for us to know that. We, we know that, I mean, we know that because we see that. But I don't think it should be just assumed that it would happen. I think there's, that's a really, you know, great.
I guess all I'm learning is how do I prove to you that?
Well, then there's also you telling us that you're doing it. I mean, and we also don't, because we get feedback from you. So I think, I think the question, I think for the board, John, you had something, but I'm coming back to you. I think the question for the board is, are we comfortable with the indicator that we approved? Do we, do we feel like this captures what we are asking for? And if we put it back to you to kind of tweak it, I don't think that it would be tweaking it to become more constrained. I think it kind of opens up, so it's measures maybe some different, like some broader pieces. John, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, and I don't know if this is helpful at this point or not, but here we go. So the way I read all of these indicators is indicator one is very much focused on two-way communication. Indicator two is very much focused on how well we inform, how we provide information. Indicator three, I've always kind of felt is much more about how we receive or how we provide those channels or avenues for feedback. It's not about two ways, it's about information coming to us. Email question is relevant, I don't know how we measure it. I, I think that that's just kind of a given. I will say though, that, you know, the thing that we struggled with was, you know, and this is self-resolved, right? Because as we've gotten into this model of governance, concerns that we had last year, Joe, just so you know, about, like, when we get a board email with a particular issue in it, who answers that? Whose, whose, whose lane is that to take care of that? Largely, that's gone away. We are, like, that was, I was like, you know, let's figure this out, we have a process for this, and, you know, checks and balances, and we don't. Because the governance system is largely shuffled back to where it needs to go. And also that you respond to these, so like, it's happening. But I think that like, that's still kind of, you know, are we making sure that we're responding? Or that we're, that we have an open place for people to send emails? So like, is the website available for that? Are there, you know, I'm not a, I don't know, like, when we look at just the indicator, do we want to phrase it differently to get at this notion of like, channels or avenues or something like that? But I think that we certainly need, from my perspective, to maybe make sure that it's focused on receiving information.
So if it's, if that is the case, then I think we, we have some solid evidence here. I would add more, like, I would provide links to our, 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 our site that, like, our title lines. Like, we have a clearing sheet, like, we'd be able to title, title lines, or look at our, our open records requests. Like, we have a very upfront, say, if you have open records, here it is, it's how you get to it. Those, that's providing, that's, those are things that provide information. So you have that sense of looking at modalities. If you have a very literal sense of the modalities, there's only really three ways to communicate it, is re-write articulation. And so, but if it's the intent of the board that it's one of those three mechanisms, we need to write articulation, and that is us receiving information from our community, then I can, I can, I can order that. I just need to understand that that's, that's it.
I guess I'm, I'm rethinking how we word this as a, when we create advice, and thinking that I would find more useful that we were effective in reaching a large portion of the stakeholders in the community versus, do we reach them in reading? Do we reach them, you know, verbally? Not, knowing that you're using all those forms of communication is valuable, but I think to me, knowing that we reached a larger portion of the diverse stakeholders that comprise the growing area school district is much more important. So maybe we missed the mark on how we worded that, but that's, that's why I think like, for example, seeing student advisory panel means something to me because that's a specific vehicle for students to provide input. Parent advisory panel, a specific, you know, vehicle for parent. And like I said, like, for bilingual families or bilingual community members. So I guess, to me, it's more useful to know that the different stakeholder groups, that the diverse stakeholders that comprise our school district all have vehicles for providing input. Versus whether they did it in writing or whether they did it verbally, you know?
So do we create the systems that allow for our diverse stakeholders to be able to engage?
To provide input to our.
But I think that's more of a question of the sufficiency of the, because the evidence does refer, the, the indicator does refer to stakeholders, that I think we, we would interpret pretty broadly. So it's, I, I think, similar to the conversation we had before, that's less an issue with the indicator than it is with us deciding whether the evidence that's presented to us is sufficient to show compliance with the indicator.
I would agree, except for the indicator that has a specific five or four.
I was going to say that. I, I, I would very much be in favor of going to what you said, which is multiple modalities. Because I found myself unnecessarily trying to count modalities instead of looking at this and saying, is this complete picture sufficient? And to show, you know, that you're getting feedback or you have opportunities to get engagement with stakeholders, which I think is the more important question than the number.
So as we're talking about, you know, again, the board won't, it doesn't rewrite indicators, but you can get successful, what we want to see. I think the putting, that the locking in on the five is almost unnecessarily restrictive. Because it's, it's sufficient opportunities, that really what we're looking at, and targeting the stakeholders, which again, we know they're doing, because we're seeing that. And I think, you know, that makes some of that.
So in this specific situation, so it doesn't force us to dumb the language that Joe just mentioned, because actually I didn't like that language, but I did my job. Would you consider calling a, a vote to amend that piece of it, to take the five out, put multiple in? So, however, if I'm forced to go back to the five, I get the rest of the sentence.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you want to change it.
I can change the indicator.
You can change the indicator, we just have to approve it. But we can, we, we can't change, we can't rewrite the indicators. That's like, we can, we can.
You've approved the indicators.
We approve them, yeah.
I can tell you what I think. I think that I would say something along the lines of, wait a minute. I think it would be reasonable to say something along the lines of, the district will offer multiple opportunities for a broad array of stakeholders to provide appropriate, but on the direction of the district. And I think that change in language speaks to kind of broadening the scope of evidence in ways that don't necessarily attribute it.
Did you get that up, that was stated, no?
I'm recording you.
Okay. So, but I want to make sure we do this appropriately though. So I would need to come back to you with a recommendation to just.
Or you can verbally offer a new indicator that we could accept and approve.
What John just said.
So it's a broad array. So you're not presenting a new indicator.
Yes, sure. People offer multiple opportunities for a broad array of stakeholders to provide appropriate input on the direction of the district.
And to be clear, I just, so as we go through, because there's going to be times where I think we're going to change, you know, we're going to look at indicators, but indicators really have to come from you. And I think when we're talking about just changing some of the language, I mean, this is the streamlined way to accomplish it, and I think it's the right way to do it for this. But I don't want to, I don't want to be in a position to change indicators wholesale.
No, no.
But we could come back and say, we, we need different, we, we want to see something that we feel like we're missing. We would ask you to, you know, come back to us with an indicator that we would approve. And again, this is all kind of, we're in a new place, and it's a little wonky, so.
Well, but we can say, like, I would want it to say this. You can take that any way you want, and then come back with whatever you want.
So with this one, I think since it's just re-wording and keeping the spirit of it, if, if the board is comfortable with that, do we have a motion to accept Dr. Clarity's new indicator?
I think John writing the language was a motion.
I think that was, okay.
I don't, I'm all second.
Yeah, okay, so all in favor of accepting indicator three with the re-wording that was provided. Is it perfect?
I agree.
Okay, that is easy enough. Okay, so I'm comfortable with that. Or is there anything else that we want to look at as far as indicators? Was indicator two, 9.2? Yeah.
It's terrible, we go back and watch the video, the 15, well, I think John's comments, let's run it back to 10. And that'll capture the statement, and then we can adjust. Thank you.
Okay, were there any other indicator questions from either the board or?
9.2 looks good.
Yeah, that's a good, okay. So we are good with this, with just that one, the one change to that indicator. Thank you, I think this will get it. We will definitely get more streamlined in going through this process. Look at where we were a year ago when we were writing these indicators, now we're. So, thank you very much, appreciate it. Did we want to take a quick look? John, I know you had some questions about O E two indicators.
Last time.
Last time.
We knew this was going to happen.
Yeah, I said this was going to happen, put a pin in it. Yeah, I said this was gonna happen, put a pin in it. Can we, uh, wait, give me a second to look that up? Maybe if there's something else we can do?
Um, I think that if we were. Well, I didn't think we needed to change that indicator. We could move on to our science capacity building. Can you be comfortable with how the process cleared, maybe the review of indicators?
Yeah.
As long as it's not mixed, we don't want to.
If I only, again, the two things along the way are not changing the spirit, which not, and second, we don't want to get in a situation where we're stacking over each other. Else, towards other, else we'll, we'll be two years behind.
Yeah.
So if we're going in this way, it's only one of them on the same night.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
Doesn't seem like.
Yeah, my notes are a little cryptic.
For your own health and safety. Look, look, we just have to stand up for a second just to move your legs up.
Once I've sat down, I'm creating the whole.
This is responsible for these snacks with us.
No, you're a camera. Camera one, I realized a hungry board is not a good board to work around. Found that out fast and now.
Yes, hey, great people, I'm not hungry.
Who sleeps in a nice chocolate cone?
Oh, it's high in sugar, put me to sleep.
Perfect, even though it's a light board. A little swingy.
Well, good evening, uh, good night, I'm well. Uh, today we want to bring to you a discussion around R two point one three. Last week, we shared with you, um, our work and what we're doing. And so I'll read to you R two, one, three. So it frames the backdrop to where we're going tonight. So this is results policy around science capacity building. In order to monitor and report student results in science, it is necessary to select and adopt the best comprehensive science curriculum and develop a program of science instruction that produces high achievement of students in natural sciences. The adoption of a science curriculum will ultimately lead to a framework that includes a curriculum scope and sequence, which includes metrics to measure student performance in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So in this capacity building section, we included a timeline. And the timeline suggested that we will include this year the following. Select an adoption team comprised of all our constituents. Identify science materials, so select, um, a book review from multiple vendors. Pilot materials within classrooms and at different grade levels. Review and collect feedbacks from all of our constituents. Ultimately, the selection and presentation of science material to the board for approval. And then implementation of a new science curriculum in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, we also presented at anticipated costs. And so there's a statement, when you know better, you do better. And so we're going to talk to you about what we learned and our recommendation moving forward, um, for science curriculum and other curriculums. So, um, we're talking about teaching, learning and innovation. And so I've got our director, Erin Stackslover, and she's going to share information. But specifically respond to leadership, informs and impacts teaching and learning. And so, um, we're, we're presenting to you exactly what we want to happen in the classroom when teachers respond to the needs of their students. So what you see in, in front of you, our vision for coherence. We're working on our strategic plan as we speak. We're engaging community members. We're talking to our students. We're talking to our staff. We're talking to our parents. We're taking in and listening their input on the direction for our district. Our current plan suns, sunsets next year. And so we will have a new plan, a five-year plan to roll out at the beginning of the school year. As part of that strategic framework, one, we'll develop a strategic plan, but then we'll also develop the journey of a lifelong learner. That journey is exactly that. It's the path that we want all students, all adults, anyone who's connected with Aroma to be on as a lifelong learner. Ultimately, that then takes us to developing a framework for teaching and learning. Absent of these things, making a decision around curriculum is not the best thing to do. And so we've learned several things along the way. And part of what we're going to share with you is what we've learned and our recommendations for the future. So I'll turn it to Kees.
Thanks, Dr. Hockens.
Um, so we wanted to be sure that we just rounded ourselves in our, our vision and our goals for exactly teaching and learning. Familiar language to all of you about our commitment to making sure that all of our students thrive in a diverse, global society. We also wanted to share with you what have been established as some overarching goals for teaching, learning and innovation. A goal that is new, um, this year that I entered into on July first and, um, have been working diligently to build understanding of current state of curriculum instruction and assessment in the broader A- School District. And those overarching goals are goals that will guide the work moving forward for the next couple of years as we start to build out systems and opportunities for improvement. Specifically, I wanted to also call out the one-to-one sessions that I did as part of my entry plan, doing principles and instructional leaders. So those instructional leaders include all of our coaches and many of our teacher leaders at sites who contribute to the instructional model. And you can see by looking at those boldled items from the feedback that I got from them in one-to-one session is that curriculum instruction and assessment were on their mind, specifically with the theme of coherence, a need for coherence, and also the need for curriculum that, as it's titled there, greatly curriculum, um, curriculum that is standards-aligned, curriculum that is comprehensive to allow us to meet the needs of all learners here in the grown areas. So those were the high-level things that came out of the one-to-one feedback sessions with those leaders. Um, with that, we've developed a progression of tasks that we need to address moving forward in teaching, learning and innovation. So the first is to conduct a curriculum audit. The second is to build out a curriculum adoption and implementation design. And the third is to get to that teaching and learning framework that Dr. Hockens just mentioned. So I'm going to take each one of those briefly to walk you through them and then see what questions you might have. So the curriculum audit is intended to answer those four questions that you see in the boxes there. Again, thinking about what is our current state of curriculum? Um, what are the resources, of the resources we have? Which are the, which of those are aligned to our district standards and which aren't? Um, making sure that our curriculum resources include assessments for learning and of learning. And also looking at our curriculum resources to include support for our multilanguage learners and our students with IEPs as well, as well as other students across all areas of teaching and learning. So that curriculum audit is actually underway. Working with site leaders in those instructional leadership roles, we have developed a model that we will go through one more time before final determination. And we'll begin to implement it with teachers and other leaders across all of our sites in October, correct, hoping to complete it by winter break. Um, and then being able to come back in January to analyze that data and using that data to inform our next steps with a curriculum adoption model and curriculum adoption cycles. So we'll be looking again at current state, looking for gaps in what we know to be best practices and priority needs and, and exact curriculum resources. The second of those things that we'll be, that we will be building on this year is that adoption and implementation model. So again, you see four priority areas. But the first one clearly is that it needs to be informed by our strategic plan and our definition of the journey of a lifelong learner. So going back to what Dr. Hocken shared to start, it's impossible for us to consider that diving into a process of adoption of science this year because we don't have the necessary information in place in order for us to do that well. We want to do it real well. So that curriculum adoption and implementation design will follow its own, um, calendar here. So in June and July, we're prepared to work with our instructional leaders who are already aware that they're going to be asked to join us in this process and have interest in being a part of this process to design that review process, develop the resources for it, and then determine course adoption cycle. So what needs to come first, second and third in the course of the next five years. And then in August of twenty twenty-three, we will be initiating that adaptive adoption cycle with our first curricular area. Bringing forward then any final recommendations for curriculum adoption and implementation in the fall of twenty twenty-four to you all as important. And then finally, from that, we will be developing a teaching and learning framework concurrently with our first adoption cycle. Again, most importantly, it will be informed by the strategic plan and also the journey of a lifelong learner. Really driven specifically by the interests and goals of our learners. So recognizing, um, the wealth of information and the wisdom that we are gaining from our students through empathy interviews, through focus groups, through shadowing of students as a part of our current strategic plan process, wanting to build on that and enhance it as needed as we build out with that teaching and learning framework would look like. And the timeline for that would be in August. We would convene a team to engage in designing, August of twenty twenty-three, convene a team to engage in designing the framework. The work with that team would go until February of twenty twenty-four, specifically defining, collecting, analyzing, idea-ing, developing that framework because we want it to be enduring, we want it to be robust, we want it to be something that we can rely on for the foreseeable future to help us make decisions about all the resources that we bring to, to the work that we do with students. And then finally revise and finalize that framework for, for presentation to you all on the date of August of twenty twenty-four. Those are the things we wanted to be sure that we made you aware of and understanding while we were responding to the COVID science adoption issue. So that we know that we have some plans in place for us to be able to do this work well.
Thank you very much, both very much. So the reason that we put this under board action is because the original timeline wasn't approved uh, under the results policy. So we would need the board's permission to make that change because it was, that was under board goal. Uh, based on the information that we give, we feel it's the best institutional organization to utilize this timeline under the science results policy and revise the former results, results, I think it's under the, the, uh, policy, so.
It is.
Yeah.
So first, I would say, I appreciate the intentionality. Making the time that, you know, the timeline that we set out makes a lot of sense with the, with the process that's in place. I mean, the process that you're building and really, I would much prefer it to take the time that it needs to be done in a way that gets all of the stakeholders, all of the, this is very, this is very girl. So I'm excited to see this. And, and I want to reiterate, we're still teaching science.
Oh, absolutely.
We, we talked about this last time. We are still teaching excellent science in our district. This is just moving us, I just wanted to reiterate that because I would.
Yes, we're still teaching science. We have resources.
Excellent science curriculum and, but we're looking to move to a coherent system. And I, I appreciate the intentionality. Um, I would say if we're doing, you know, if looking at indicators and monitoring, we're kind of looking in that realm, I would say we don't need to necessarily change the indicators. It's again, we're in a capacity building. If there's a timeline that's there and we haven't met it, it's still, we'd love to hear, where are you at in this progress in this process? But, um, I don't think that there's, that there's anything that the board needs to, and we certainly aren't going to jump in and change the timeline um, because that is really well thought out. So do you have any?
About the timeline?
I might add, some of the work, um, that we referenced is work that our teachers will do, uh, our work, will be work that our teachers and leaders will do digging into the standards. So, um, that is work that has been done in pockets in our district, but we realize that in order to make these types of decisions, we really have to dig into what the standards are and make sure that they're aligned, they're well. And so that's, that's learning that we have to do that foundational work. So that's part of this timeline, um, that type of professional development that people engage in, that will allow us to make better decisions around selecting curriculum.
So I just have a couple of things. I think the first thing is just my own bias. Whenever we talk about aligning the standards, like I appreciate the value in that. But when we put this in print like this is what we're going to do, I want to make sure that we're, like, there's a tension between, you know, finding, adopting curriculum that is standards-based and research-based and all that mumbo jumbo, but then also affording our teachers the agency and the space to teach in their own way, um, and develop their own lesson plans and be professionals. And so I want to make sure that, or I don't want to make sure, I just have to feel obligated to kind of throw out there that this is something that I get kind of touchy about personally. Um, and want to ask a lot of questions about, you know, to make sure that we're balancing that need for aligning with the standards. Because, you know, there, there is a lot of curriculum out there that is standards-based and it is research-based and that's great. But then we're also compelled, you know, to create twenty-first century learners, right? That are flexible and creative and all these things require more space in the curriculum in a day. Like to do project-based learning and to do things like that, that, that are a little bit more messy than some of this might suggest. And so again, I'm not so much asking the question as I'm just, this is where I'm coming from. And so I have a lot of questions about things. More specifically, when I see something here around, uh, when you're looking at current curriculum resources and whether they're including support for, um, multiple language learners and, or, and students with IEPs, you know, I want to make sure or ask whether, like, how we're thinking about that because, you know, there are a lot of different ways to provide support for a student with an IEP. Some are more inclusive than others. You know, some are, well, here's your worksheet, here's your other worksheet. And some are just, here's a worksheet that can be done a lot of different ways. That can be more inclusive for students that are operating, uh, in different ways. And so I just want to kind of put out there that, you know, that's the type of detailed sort of thing, like, are we just checking a box or are we looking at like, well, how inclusive is this? And then my last thought on this, I'm just throwing all this out there right now. My last thought on this is, I think this is great. This is a great example of something that should be really transparent and intentional about how you're doing it. Because, um, we don't adopt curriculum really-nilly. You know, it's not an ideological process. And, you know, when, I, I think there should be a lot of transparency for parents who are concerned about what their kids are learning so that they can also see that this is a process that's rooted in professionalism, but also in research and understanding. So that they can also see that this is a process that's rooted in professionalism, but also in research and understandings. And, and, you know, it's not just something that we're picking because we like it, that it's rigorous and, um. So, yeah, so I really like developing this process first and then putting it out there and saying, this is the process. And it's not just people voting on it.
So to circle it back for the board, you're just asking for us to have a understanding of, acknowledge that there'll be additional time needed to implement the process. We're not voting on the process?
Similar to the last one, I do, I'm going to ask the board to implement this new timeline and replace the old timeline as an indicator. So.
I cannot push ahead. All these things pulled up in my head. All right, so, um, as far as the board, does the board have any, uh, any issues with changing the indicators timeline to reflect what the presentation tonight?
I'll happily move to that effect.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
A second from John. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then you'll just provide us with the updated indicator?
Correct.
And we are, appreciate the, uh, update. So that's very, I, again, I appreciate the intentionality. So thanks for sharing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That year, it was four ayes?
Yeah.
Four ayes, yeah.
No, it was two point one point three.
All right. Okay, this one is, uh, this is complex. Uh, OE four, we're asking the board's permission, and this is the calendar, this is why this one is involved, to, on our calendar, we are scheduled for OE six in November and OE four in December. We're asking the board's permission to plot OE four and OE six. The reason is, uh, many of the indicators for OE six rely on an audit. The audit will not be completed until December. And so we have, yeah, we're better positioned for OE four in November. And we only need the audit results to give you a full, detailed report for OE six and the permission associated with the calendar.
Is there a motion to approve some of these for a second?
Second.
I have a motion, Christina, a second from John. I think you have to agree. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Okay, so fruit, thank you very much. It was an easy calendar issue. Uh, we had one person for public comment who was here in support of wage increase for all students. This is the, and I can read, this is from, who is Jamie? Ms. Jamie Brown. Okay, so it does the same. Okay, thanks. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jamie Brown. I have been a Verona area school district employee for nineteen years. During that time, I've worked in the special education department, working with some of our most vulnerable student populations. I am currently in the eighteen to twenty-one-year-old program where I support students on volunteer and paid job sites throughout the community. I also help students work on life skills. And my colleagues work to ensure that our students have a successful transition from our eighteen to twenty-one-year-old program to their future employment that is geared specifically to them. In addition, I am also currently serving as Vespa co-president, representing a wide array of job categories that make up our Vespa union and collaborating with the district to ensure that support staff voices are heard. I want to speak tonight in support of the proposed budget that includes an additional increase for support staff's hourly wages. I know firsthand how important it is to have highly qualified support staff working on the front lines. Vespa members are the employees who work closely with special education students to ensure their needs are met. We clean and maintain the district's facilities. We provide meals to students. We support nursing staff in the health office and provide security across our school district. Those are just a few of the roles Vespa members fill across our district. In short, we are often the behind-the-scenes workers doing everything we can to ensure the district is running smoothly. During COVID, many of us were essential workers reporting outside what other employee groups work from the safety of their homes. It is critical for students to have the support of a community of support staff employees. Investing in your hourly workers helps Vespa employees earn a living wage. During this time of historically high inflation, the proposed additional hourly increase will make a significant impact in the lives of your Vespa employees. Thank you for your commitment to be ASD students' families and the support staff who support them. And that again was from Ms. Jamie Brown, and I think her words are incredibly important to hear. And I think, uh, I appreciate that she shared that with us. Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? We always ask the Verona Press reporter if they want to make a public comment.
No, I cannot make a public comment.
That's what they always say.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we can move on to the superintendent consent agenda. Any questions? And if not, we can, any questions? Okay, consent agenda is approved. The board's consent agenda, any questions? The board's consent agenda has been approved. Future agenda items, um, just take a look at our upcoming meeting schedule. Um, I did not realize that we are not at the end of October, so I will take close note. We still have another meeting in October because apparently it's only the tenth today. Um, also remember that we have our community, um, listening sessions. And then, um, moving from there, I'd like to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub F to consider financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons for an preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems where the investigation charges against specific persons, except where paragraph E applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in problems or investigations regarding people's social hearings. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I have a motion from Joe and a second from John. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are officially in closed session. Thank you so much, everybody. We appreciate it.
I was wondering, can I get a copy of that letter?
We have this.
We're hearing one, maybe someone else can just send me a copy of it.